Call to order this February the twenty fourth, twenty sixteen, meeting of the Franklin County Commission. Roll call.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
If you stand to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Commissioner Harris.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, universal, and just as for all.
As we stand here today in the light of God's grace and love, we give you thanks for all the wonderful things that you've done for us. We ask that you give us, as leaders of this community, the knowledge, the courage, compassion, and the understanding to go forward to do those things that are in the best interest of our citizens. These things we say and ask you, thanks for the whole unit.
Thanks to correspondence and organizational business. I want to sign up for public comment that'll take us to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda that need to approve today are the minutes from the February the seventeenth, two thousand sixteen meeting, and tax change orders in the amount of minus two thousand six hundred and ten dollars and eight cents. And we have one emergency, we have a bid application, and it is for Jesse W. Christian from Halloween Fire District. Have a motion to approve the consentative. Motion, yeah, consentative. And the motions are second, second, the motions are second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
You can do it all there a little bit.
Okay, first item of business would be to recognize Jess Wallow for his years of service and his presentation. Jess Wallow. Next item of business will be to consider supporting United Way's two thousand sixteen sumo wrestling invitation. Curating county employees' employment, making a contest about that.
Good morning.
Morning.
Alright, so, as you know, Colton's been a wrestler. Um, this is such a fun event, and it just draws a great, great community together. Um, I am so excited to tell you that the wrestling invitational is actually even growing more this year. It seems like we have more participating companies and organizations, um, than even last year, which is very exciting. Um, it's a great opportunity for us to put forth our, our strongest champion within our companies and organizations. Um, but mostly it's, it's to benefit the nonprofits that are under the United Way umbrella, and there are seventeen of them this year. Um, and so each one, uh, is integral in our community, and I think you guys all know, uh, everything from across the Big Brothers Big Sisters and communities and schools. They all have a huge impact. You can help house, you know, every single one of them plays a part. And so when you guys actually send your wrestler forward and all these folks come out, um, it allows us to acknowledge those nonprofits in our community. Each one of those nonprofits do come to this event, about three hundred people attend it, um, we've noticed. So that's a, a great out, outcome for our community, I feel. Um, last year we raised fifteen thousand from the event, and I'd like to do that again with your support. I think we can make that goal happen. This helps us reach our annual campaign goal too, just so you guys are aware, the goal this year was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We're sitting at a hundred and sixty-three thousand. I'm so close. If we make this goal with the, the sumo wrestling, then that puts us right where we need to be to give those nonprofits that we promised the amount of money that they needed and requested in their grants this year. So, um, it would, it would mean an awful lot to United Way and the people in the community if you guys actually consented to do this again. Last year you guys made a donation of two hundred and fifty, uh, dollars, which was the, uh, the sponsorship level that you chose. I did give you a packet of sponsorship levels. If you choose to make a different sponsorship level, um, choice, then that's, um, that's wonderful, but we would also encourage that sponsorship if we can.
Okay, I see on the paper that, uh, it is on April the fifteenth.
Yep.
From six o'clock to eight o'clock at the Wilson Fieldhouse.
Tax Day. I'm gonna make sure no one forgets that date and they all show up.
Is there any suggestions? Lovely interesting participation, right? Have I, we have every care since we started this, so surely we can find someone that will be investing. Yes, maybe medical. Is there anything, is there any discussion on the, uh, sponsorship at this time? Commitment on that at this time? John? Oh, I, you know, I don't remember if we did a motion, but on the, uh, sponsorship level, we're gonna do this time. Is there more than two hundred dollars in there available? Is there more than four hundred dollars in there available? What we did last year, two hundred, two hundred, two?
Two fifty.
Two fifty?
Yeah.
I, I would, uh, empty supply seats for the survivor. I would, uh...
I publicize the heck out of you guys. I promise.
Well, United Way is such a worthy cause. I mean, I'm not telling anything to anybody that's sitting in this room right now that doesn't know it already. I've been involved with it since I got to the community in ninety-five, and before that, I just see what United Way does around our nation, but in particular, uh, what it's done and what it does do for our citizens in Franklin County. Uh, of all the places I've lived before, there tends to be a higher, from my perspective, there tends to be a higher need here in Franklin County than other places that I've lived. And I know that, uh, Meg works diligently along with the boards and, and the citizens to, to, uh, raise funds. And, uh, personally, I'd, I'd make the motion that we do the sponsorship at the five hundred dollar level. A motion that? I said I would make the motion that we make a sponsorship at the five hundred dollar level. Have a motion for five hundred dollar sponsorship, second to that, or any other discussion? Okay, that's one time, is there a second to the five hundred dollar? Here's, uh, this time, second to that. Yeah, the motion for two hundred and fifty, second to that. Second thing, motion is second for two hundred and fifty dollar sponsorship.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
That comes for catering and then box seats. Uh, I want to think there's some way in our company we can do something. Either maybe donate them to a charitable group or, 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 maybe have an employee drawing or something. John, come up with some way or, Rick, I don't know what you're thinking, but...
The way we selected last, sorry, I need to get the, uh, employees department the money into a can to see some, uh, maybe we could give those four to that department to, yeah, kind of sweeten the pot. Get to see their coworkers, uh...
That'd be a great idea. I think department, have each camp of departments, and that department gets the four. Maybe something like that, that'd be a good competition, help us, I guess, great. Just try to...
That would be really fun.
Do we get a motion to participate in our consent, uh, to, uh, participate in a wrestling contest or that? I don't have a motion to, uh, to...
Um, so, I did, I talked to Janet before the meeting, and I did say while I was here, do you guys mind if I mention one other thing that I'd like to promote? Um, so, I don't know if you guys have heard, but, um, United Way has been implementing something called a STEM mentoring program across the board in multiple, um, children, youth-based nonprofits that are under umbrella, including the O R C and communities and schools and, uh, Big Brothers Big Sisters, and also in the Arts Council's Oh Yeah After School Club. And so what that means, STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. And I really would like to encourage folks, um, from the county to maybe become some of these mentors. The, the, uh, requirement for that is very minimal. The idea is that what we do is we, um, speak with people who are part of the county, who have jobs, who use science, technology, engineering, and math in their jobs. Um, and then I train them how to do a one-hour presentation to the youth in our community. And those presentations cover a couple of different things. They cover that person's educational background, what brought them to the field, um, how they use science, technology, engineering, and math in their actual jobs. And then they also talk about, uh, you know, like, uh, what their favorite part of that job is, and then we kind of emphasize a few key science, technology, engineering, and math vocabulary words that are used throughout the presentation, so there's an educational component. And then we do a one-time, hands-on project with the kids, so that the kids can actually experience what it's like to do that person's job, on a small level, obviously. But still, it gives them that confidence. Um, last year we did this mentoring program before the, the last, the year, and the kids in the program increased their confidence in math and science by thirty-seven percent, which I feel is pretty significant. Um, and if we can keep doing that, that's just gonna encourage that component of education that much more. I'm very proud of all of the mentors who have stepped forward. Um, I can kind of pass around what I've got. Um, there's been so many people, fantastic folks, I recognize many of them. Um, and then this morning I spoke with Dustin here, uh, while he was setting up, and he said that he would be possibly interested in being one of these mentors. But there are so many of the people in the county who have the skill sets to encourage our youth to grow up, to have fantastic jobs. And the whole reason that we started this program was because I had been at a communities and schools event, and I interviewed a group of third graders. And in the room, about half of the third graders said that they wanted to grow up to be rock stars or basketball star stars. And the other half of the room said they wanted to work at Walmart or at a gas station. And that's fine, those are great goals. The problem is, is that those aren't the only things out there, and that's all those kiddos had been exposed to. And so we're just trying to broaden horizons and give kids the confidence needed for them to explore the world and hopefully grow up to have fantastic careers of their own that they, that they absolutely adore. Um, and also, it, in the long term, should rise the income levels of Franklin County residents if, uh, those folks are, are making solid wages from the industries that provide science tech. I don't know if you guys know, but those tend to be high-paying jobs, about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, so at the beginning of every single, okay, so at the beginning of every year, uh, program, so we implemented the program in the summer camp through O R C. And then we implemented the program in the, uh, communities and schools after school, Reach For The Stars program. And we also implemented the program in the Oh Yeah Club, which is through the Arts Council. And so at the very beginning of the year, what we did is we just passed out surveys to all the kids. And, um, they had the ability to mark what their favorite subjects were, and what they liked, and what they felt like they didn't like. And so they went from marking that they were better at reading and stuff, to actually marking that they felt like they were better at math and science. And I felt like that was a significant change. Um, there was also a nine percent increase in interest in STEM careers, and that's not as significant, but it's still significant. Um, and so I thought that was a really interesting fact. And also, in the surveys, um, the kids were allowed to list what their two dream jobs would be, like, there was a blank spot. So we did, like, a few of the surveys for, like, A B C order, but, um, in the blank spots, when they had originally, like, the first survey that they, they filled out, they would pick really broad careers. They would say things like, "I'm gonna be a scientist" or whatever, do something. So it might be science-related, but it didn't say specifics. And then by the end of the programs, when we did the final survey at the end of the year, um, they actually were saying more specific things, like, "I would like to be a mechanical engineer," you know? So it was like, the influence was happening. And it, it's also been really fun to watch them too, because some of the kids attended the summer playground program, and then they were also in the after-school program through communities and schools. And while some of the presenters were making presentations, um, they would say a vocabulary word that they had learned at the summer playground camp, and it was like, yes, they're retaining this, you know? So, um, it was really, really fun. Um, and I feel like it's had a great impact, and like I said, there's just some great opportunities. It's a three-hour commitment altogether, 'cause it's a one-hour presentation. And then because the grant that's providing the funding for this is through the Department of Education, we do have to meet the Department of Education standards. Um, and so I do do a training and help, help them actually set the curriculum, so that we're meeting the Department of Education standards for it. So it's two hours of, you know, I have to do an orientation training and then help them make that, that curriculum up. And then when that's over, uh, they make the one-hour presentation and they're done. So it's about a three-hour commitment altogether. But it's super fun, and please encourage your employees, if you can, 'cause there's some great folks that, that really provide some benefit and knowledge to our kids. So, that's my plug.
Sounds like a great program. I'm sure, uh, for us, we'd have to make this the right person that, that would do well, so I think we'd have to go on and, uh... If you can invest in one of them, like, uh...
Yeah, they were great. That was a really fun one. So... For the, the overall goal for the campaign, it was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, like I said, we're sitting at about a hundred and sixty-three from pledged monies, so we're really close. It's super duper duper close. If we push ourselves over with the sumo wrestling, I think we'll be solid. Thank you.
Next item of business will be consider authorizing the chairman to execute the bridge inspection proposal from C F S Engineers. Jim?
Morning, Commissioner. Franklin County is required by Federal Highway Administration, KDOT, to inspect our bridges on a regular interval. The, uh, proposal, you know, to, to, for these inspections, cost for these inspections, two hundred dollars per bridge, for several bridges total of fourteen hundred dollars. We request a motion, authorizing the chairman to execute the agreement.
Jim, do you have any questions on this? Something that we have to do, say?
Two of these bridges move by annually, two annually because of their suspension, excuse me. The other five are on old fifty-nine, which are not comfortable with, either the D O T or the county, nor the inspection.
Have any questions for Jim on all this? If not, we look for a motion to approve the authorizing the chairman to execute the bridge inspection proposal. So, uh, the motions are second. The motion is second, Jim.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, Jim's gonna stay up there with us, and this, next item of business will be considering authorizing the chair to execute the agreement with C F S Engineers for the fractured critical bridge inspections in the amount of six thousand nine hundred dollars.
We asked to inspect these in two thousand fourteen, and we're disappointed from these bridges are required to be inspected in two thousand sixteen. There are three fractured critical bridges, uh, two bridge down on Butler, a trust on the Oscar Terrace, and a trust on Monty.
Any questions on this? Questions, if not, we look for a motion to approve the authorizing the chairman to execute the agreement with C F S Engineers for the fractured critical bridge inspections in the amount of six thousand nine hundred dollars. Motion? Another motion, motion is second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yep.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Really, Jim, uh, which ones are, which bridges are, are most suspicious to be rated?
Uh, two that, uh, are now being inspected annually, one of which are five last session for the, uh, office system bridge program, and successfully, Jim, something...
Okay, the next item of business will also be, Jim, and it'll be considering offering a dust control program, approving the application from... Application form and soliciting bid for the application of the magnesium chloride solution for the dust control program, and waiting the publication.
Annually, the county has offered this, and this is just a request to your approval of the four nature program form.
How many miles did we do last year, Jim?
We did nine in one sites, at a minimum of three hundred feet.
Got a drive, doesn't ever use the side of the... Have any questions about the, improving the, uh, application form, soliciting a bid for the application of the product for the dust control? You have to make a motion, Jim. And the motion is just second, second, motion is second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, that takes us to staff reports, John. Uh, a couple things, is, uh, number one, uh, the sheriff, myself, Gayla, and, uh, Lieutenant Colonel, uh, there's some questions about, uh, there's a... Sheriff's Department regarding some staff, and so the, uh, let's capers, uh, the sheriff was talking to, uh, giving his sources to them on these things, and we were getting different answers. So, we actually, uh, went up and faced base with them and talked that out, uh, as far as making sure that we were getting on the same page. And, uh, so that was all successfully, uh, resolved, uh, that issue. What was the resolution? Uh, the resolution was, is that, uh, the position, uh, of the nine-one-one director, that that should remain in the cap, and that, uh, the court security should remain in the courts. So, uh, that's, uh, and that was their decision on that. Um, second thing is, March tenth, uh, leadership class is having a castle tour, uh, there, to, to be, uh, for that. They invited members of the leadership decision from around the county and city to, to go on that, so they all were invitation, were taking the bus up there. So they all were invitation to the county commissioners, they, uh, they, uh, they, uh, take the tour. What's the date, the end, March the tenth, or... Along with that is that, uh, April fourteenth, we nailed down, again, there's something I told you, uh, the last week, that there was a conflict, uh, days before, there's a south, it was just official statement there. That day, that day has been nailed down, April fourteenth, so, uh, just to put that in. Um, right now, I am working on a budget map up. That's something that I've got in the past, uh, it's just kind of a map up to talk to, uh, like, your body, and it's easy to just find where things landed as far as the chart. These are, uh, members who, uh, there are some clues that remained in two, the right two, uh, and other members that didn't actually set the end, we have to, uh, but this gives the, the commissioners... And it's, it's, it gives a pretty good idea of where things landed, there's some questions they had, analysis of things, why it went over a logic, over a logic, just to kind of make it preparatory for... It's, uh, it's a good tool to use, and it's also, uh, an interest in transparency, so to be all clear on the budget. That also is, uh, clear to the one, uh, citizens, and, uh, it's, it's, it's on working on that, and, uh, we have, uh, all the, uh, things. Uh, community partner funding, uh, that is, uh, I've seen applications on that. They are, to, to, to stay, I don't know, uh, it's, it's, I'm getting them, uh, there's been a couple of the, uh, we've scheduled, tried to schedule those, it's a pretty quick, uh, they have the, uh, there's a couple of more in the study session. I've had a couple of, uh, that would say that they have things already going, so they're, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's planned well, that's, so, I think, just, uh, just, uh, we have plenty of time to do that. Um, one thing, uh, just wanted to touch on, is that it's been my experience in the past that sometimes, uh, on, uh, funding campaigns like United Way and, and different things like that, is that, uh, there's been my experience that sometimes the boards have always, uh, wanted an interest, had interest in, in... wanted an interest, had interest in, in, uh, raising the amount, but at the same time, a lot of the, when they raise the amount, there's increased things that come with it, like more tables, more, uh, announcements, different things like that, uh, more, uh, people getting meals and stuff like that. And sometimes, the, the, it's been my experience, like I said, that the boards have not wanted to do, raise up to a higher level because they didn't want to look like, uh, they're receiving compensation, or receiving something back. And how we handle that, uh, that I've been part of the task, is that we wait for some of that. So, I just wanted to throw that out there, that I, I think that if there is interest, but that was kind of what was holding, holding the board back on increasing the dollars for that, that's something that we can certainly, uh, wait and ask, and not have all of these benefits that we receive benefits for this, or contributions on that, so I just kind of wanted to throw that out there, that if the board wanted to, uh, that wasn't a concern, why, uh, we weren't, we wouldn't go to a higher amount, uh, that that is something that we can, uh, see, uh, to ask, that the county not receive some of those benefits and some of the things.
On the, uh, April fourteenth on these candidates, is that the one we're hosting?
Yes.
That is the one that we're, that'll be pretty much one day, one at a time. Uh, till about noon?
Regi, no, registration's from eight-thirty to nine-thirty, and then lunch will be, lunch will be about noon, and then that doesn't usually wrap up till one or, uh,
eight-thirty or?
Yes, yeah.
April fourteen, April fourteen.
Well, you can be down at noon if you don't want to eat lunch.
Usually, the, the ones that I've gone to in the past, though, during the lunchtime, there's, uh, presentations, and information shared, and gifts that are given, uh, that, uh, we come at noon if we just want to eat lunch.
No, I think the fellowship with your counterparts from other counties is more worthwhile than the lunch.
What do you guys like with the lunch, anyway?
Joy is heading up the committee.
She's cooking it all, okay.
Uh, she is not cooking.
I know. That's all I have. Sure. Yeah, I actually learned some, I learned quite a bit about some additional capers retirement options that were, last year, I believe, that they passed, that I wasn't aware of, and that's going to allow, John, I did talk about some other possibilities, or some things we were looking to do, but we didn't know how financially that would affect us, it looks like. It could benefit us greatly, with some of the, some of the changes that have just been put into place. So, um, we did discuss that, and then I believe last week, you'd asked me where we were on our deputy hiring process, and we have the oral board, and no, about one or two weeks, and so, we're starting that process real soon.
Having gone through the, uh, retirement process, the one recommendation I would give to anybody that was getting close to that or thinking about that is to go to the peak and sit down with them. I had numerous people tell me numerous things, finally went up and sat down with them, and if you come out there, it's crystal clear what you have and what you're gonna get, so.
Well, I, that's probably, as the administrator said, Gayla was calling and getting one answer, I was calling and getting another answer, and, so, you're in, sure, that's right.
Sheriff, could you touch on the, uh, uh, trade-ins?
Oh, yes, um, the, the vehicles that, uh, that we're trading in are a, an Expedition, two Explorers, and, um, a Crown Vic. The Expedition and the Ford Explorers were all three surplus vehicles when they were purchased originally. Uh, and they do not have a, uh, any special package on those. The, uh, Crown Vic that we're trading in is one that has just over a hundred and eighty thousand miles on it. Uh, so, there's starting to be a lot of maintenance on those vehicles. Um, a lot of our, well, if you see our vehicle maintenance expenses, it's because we have, uh, have vehicles like that. Where we had estimated to get our trade, uh, the trade-ins, we're gonna come in about, looks like about, probably fourteen hundred less than what we had estimated that we would do on that, uh, but it's kind of a, is that, is that money?
Yeah, and just that there was a plan to keep one as a surplus, but looking at, at it, uh, he, he decided to trade them all in.
Yeah, we're gonna trade off four of those in because, uh, the commission have, um, granted us to keep that, uh, Charger that is, that can't be used in patrol. And that we're using as a fuel vehicle to go training and things like that, and so, there was no need for us to keep one of those other ones that we are trading. All four of them. Is that Charger, that's the one that was wrecked and put back together and that you weren't comfortable with, that's for high speed, because, uh? I think, Sheriff, Jimmy, anything else?
I just want you guys to know that I'll be out, I'm attending that leadership class, is taking the trip to the Capitol, so, um, we're all really looking forward to that Capitol trip. Um, also, I just want you to know that we'll be finishing the all, um, the fourth, um, of all four high schools in the county registering the, uh, seniors to vote. So, that, that project that we took on this year, we previously worked with Candy Campbell at the high school here, and she really helps immensely getting all the high schoolers here in Ottawa done. And we've visited West Franklin the last two years, and, and we did one of those two years at, um, Central Heights, but this year, we made a real effort to do all four schools and, and get a program going, so that continues every year, to reach out to those students, to get them, get them thinking about voting early, so we create lifetime voters there, so that's a project we did this year, and we can leave the next day, so, we're looking to have that.
Takes us to, uh, convention comments.
I went to the area agency on aging, uh, board meeting yesterday, and I didn't realize that their, uh, policy board was out there, uh, in the advisory board, or council, and it's, uh, at the same time, that's a little bit unusual, except. Anyway, we had a presentation from Sheldon, was, uh, Director of Health Reform Resource Project, Kansas Grant Makers, and now, and he was talking about can care, which is synonymous with medic, Medicaid, and he said, uh, Kansas is not, uh, that's not up for the federal expansion of Medicaid. And by not doing that, uh, you've got about a hundred and fifty thousand people that could have been, uh, served in, uh, can care, and we created, uh, thirty-five hundred, uh, four thousand new jobs, and it's great, uh, economic stimulus. And he talked a lot about that. One thing, uh, somebody asked about, uh, the election and, and who gets in office, uh, some of the candidates have proposed, uh, scrapping Obamacare, Affordable Care Act, uh, and he says, "That'd be very difficult to do, and most likely, uh, certain candidate, uh, it's been most, most highly noted." Also, they did talk about the, an American nutritionist, resident directors resign, and, uh, so they're looking for another director there. They're looking at, uh, more efficiency in their nutrition sites around several counties, uh, some of our, uh, just being about two people, two or three people that, uh, that are not very efficient, so we're looking to ways to be, become more efficient and serve, serve the, uh, customers. You know, two of them coming to the nutrition side, for lunch, they can serve a, a meal on wheel or something like that, is, this is easy and not, uh, staff person, uh, they, nutritionists. But that's another thing, for the, for the nutritionists.
Haven't attended any meetings, but, uh, if the commission's been following some of the legislative process, uh, you may or may not know that, uh, the Kansas Senate, uh, uh, bill, SB three sixty-seven, uh, the reform bill, uh, did pass thirty-eight votes in favor, two votes against, and of course, that's got the veil of saving money, which, uh, looking at the figures of saving the money, but, uh, on the backside, the impact, uh, that it may have at the local level, is, uh, if it does go into effect, uh, remains to be seen. I think, uh, that's what, uh, our department head over at Juvenile, that was talking to us about at the, uh, luncheon the other day, uh, if there's not the programs for these, uh, juvenile offenders, uh, then it may be kind of like our mental health care thing, and saving money up there, and just, uh, have a cycle of re-arsecuration of folks that, uh, needed help but didn't get it. So, anyway, it, it did pass, uh, pass the Senate, and, uh, we'll look to see what happens on down the road. I haven't been to any meetings, but I'll bring some up right quick, not to make a long discussion out of it, but I had a, we discussed the, uh, county wildfire, a Walmart, Los Angeles, and so forth, and I had an individual come up to me, I think it was actually the same day after we discussed that, and he was on a, on the fire boards, and he came up to me and said, "Uh, write my name down on the list that are for the county wildfires, and we need to do this." And, and I had a conversation with the subject a couple of years ago, and he was definitely against this, and we talked again the other day, and, uh, he said, "It's, it's, it's to happen," he said, "I've changed my opinion, and if we're gonna do this, we need to do it," and, uh, so I just, so I'll throw that out there, but, uh, also, the guy, uh, yeah, the first guy that was on the fire board said that he thought the meeting would work better, and should be the fire boards and committees, and the ones that are actually making the decisions, and, and so forth, and, uh, if you can, uh, use that with them, without the, the chiefs all involved, so, they were just, uh, like, so, other than that, I have, uh, nothing else. Anything else, if, if not, would, uh, motion to adjourn?
I have a question, uh, regarding, like, the best expenses, uh, that I've been really grateful to this community, because the Herald for our events, and so a lot of it is promoting, uh, they actually are making a two thousand five hundred dollar donation for all of the press that we run in kind, that's absolutely amazing. Kofo has been amazing for, and generally allow us to do a live community show, um, Friday mornings, if you guys have ever heard. Um, and so, we're allowed to promote that, uh, the sumo wrestling on that, and I bring on wrestlers and that sort of thing. So, if you actually look at the, the packet for, um, all of the expenses that could be incurred, uh, the majority of our expenses obviously go to renting those stupid sumo suits, um, and so, um, so most of the things are in-kind donation. I think we pay for, uh, the T-shirts to be printed, and, um, that's really, I think the big payments are going out are the T-shirts printing, and then also those silly sumo suits, which I feel is really great, so, so grateful that everybody has been helping with this event. Um, but just so you guys know, the, the money's coming back to the agency, so that's really good. Anyway, thought I'd tell you that.
Motion, adjourn? Yeah, the motion is just second, second, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, adjourn.